10th, 205, this is a special meeting of the Nettleland Downtown Development Authority. Present are Paul Benidetti, attorney for the authority, Troy Bernburg, who is managing director of public finance, Northland Public Finance, and Steve Roundtree in the meeting in person. Others online are, we don't know at this point, so we'll start. This is an informational meeting, no decision will be made, whatever. And the two individuals present are going to talk about lines of credit and how they can be utilized by the DDA. So Mr. Bernburg is a banker, has worked with other DDAs, and is knowledgeable about this kind of thing, so I'm going to turn to him to give us a briefing.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to be with you all. I'll start with a quick introduction of who I am. Again, I'm Troy Bernburg, managing director of public finance for Northland Securities. We are an investment bank based out of Minneapolis with an office in Greenwood Village, South Denver. I've been in public finance, had the privilege of being in this business for my entire professional career. That's spanning now over 20 years. And in the last 10 years or so, I've specialized, part of my practice, to around development, public finance. And that's ultimately led me to work with urban renewal authorities as well as DDA or as well as downtown development authorities. Most recently, I've been retained by Englewood Downtown Development Authority as well as Eagle Downtown Development Authority. Quite two different DDAs in terms of geographics and demographics, but what they do have similar is that they've been recently created. They're in their early years of their life cycle. And I've specialized and helped both guide them, counsel them, and advise them with how to establish frameworks and infrastructure so that they can maximize the use of tax increment revenues for the projects that they wish to affect. And I'm here today on an informational basis to share that lines of credit are certainly a tool in the toolbox for DDAs and how to fund projects and to fund operations as well. I've tried to do as much kind of preliminary homework as I could on your organization. I know that you're not new new. You're several years into your 30-year life cycle. You had a temporary mill levy that I believe was then, again, voter approved in the last few years, and I assume that we couldn't fund the voting results, but I imagine that passed successfully and you have that permanent five mills.
We do. There is a bit of an exception though, I'm not sure if it's unique or not, but the residential properties are not subject to, within the district, are not subject to mill levy. Or the TIF.
Yes, that's right. And I did actually see that in some of the ballot language that I was able to pull up. And I think the great news that I've discovered about your organization is that you do have a mill levy, which is great. The two organizations that I represent, mentioning them just a moment ago, they don't have mill levies, neither one of them do so. They have some nuance in how we're able to make their operations sustainable. And oftentimes in my work, I'm referencing or begging, borrowing, and stealing from peer DDAs. There are now 20 DDAs in the state of Colorado with Littleton being the most recent. And there are a couple of cases or peer cases that I would point to, principally Loveland and Castle Rock DDAs. Both utilize a line of credit mechanism to fund programming and projects. Typically, that line of credit is going to be secured by something. And it's nice that you all have operating history and some money in the bank with which to secure a line of credit. And line of credits can be very effective mechanisms when they are used and used to the point of effectiveness. And as long as you're using the proceeds of a line of credit that align with board policy and your plan of development, it can be a very effective tool. In my line of work, I tend to scrutinize the line of credit agreements, making sure that my clients are represented appropriately in those agreements, making sure that the fees are appropriate to the market and to competitors that might offer a similar product. And I really help DDAs not just with the borrowing side, like with the line of credit, but also with the investment side as well. And so I've worked very closely with Englewood and Eagle to implement board policy documents that, among many other things, include items about how to manage the money sustainably going forward and always making your money work to the extent it can work the most with what rates are producing now. So right now, we are in an elevated interest rate environment, which I think is great for the investment side. So I certainly counsel my clients to stay on top of investment opportunities for short-term liquidity needs and then longer-term needs. So shorter-term liquidity needs is, you know, finding a money market or similar account to make sure you're getting some interest on your operational and programming funds. And then the other bucket is looking at a longer-term outlook for investments, such as right now certificates of deposit. My firm actually sells and trades certificates of deposit in the certificate of deposit market. And I see rates on a daily basis, and right now, those rates are particularly attractive. So that's something I mentioned as an aside. But lines of credit, again, can be effective when they're implemented correctly. I prefer to try to see what the relationship is that the DDA has with the bank and would it be worth exploring other indications of interest from other banks to make sure that you are getting the best deal that you can get for that line of credit? But oftentimes, the line of credit could be provided by your operational and daily bank and can be secured by funds on hand at that bank. And so for me, it's an option to allow you to advance projects that are either imminent or that have potentially a gap funding that needs to be addressed. Ultimately, as long as the uses comply with the board and its plan of development, you can spend the money in those manners. And for me, I could go on and on about, you know, when do you actually release the money from a line of credit? It really depends on the nature of the improvements or development that you're trying to affect. So oftentimes, I'll say as a quick aside, that with my other DDA clients, I've counseled them to do most of their funding on a reimbursement basis so that it's a true public-private partnership on these developments. I think that's what DDAs really do best when they're implemented in the right ways is that they are leaders in producing really positive outcomes from private and public partnerships. There are always going to be cases where there is some gap funding that the developer may need to affect a project and the public benefit related to that project. And ultimately, I tell my clients that the developer, in some cases, should come up with that money first. And then what would occur from that point is a reimbursement agreement whereby certain milestones are met and those funds are released. Lines of credit, you can use those for reimbursement mechanisms, but you can also use those for cash contributions to projects. My clients often will collaborate with their municipality and their communities. So I also counsel my clients on, hey, how much cash did you put in versus your other stakeholders in the process? So I like to take a holistic view, is everyone getting a good deal at the end of the day? But I then dive into a great deal of detail in those arrangements to make sure that those dollars are being spent in the appropriate way. I've been a Colorado taxpayer for 25 years. I take that responsibility incredibly seriously. And that outlook and perspective permeates throughout my work. And so, you know, at times I can be overly thorough as far as some of my clients see it, but I think at the end of the day, I'm protecting the interests of the taxpayer money and my DDA clients. I can address more specific questions, but I feel like I've droned on enough for the first few minutes here and happy to kind of expand on my opening comments.
I'd like to address a few questions that came from our last board meeting.
Okay.
One, in terms of establishing a line of credit and being able to use your certificate of deposit, what we've done, we've pledged $250,000. I think we have a $500,000 CD now for a line of credit. Is it possible to exceed, if you have a record of good payment with your bank, to get the line of credit to be given in excess of the collateral that you've put up?
Yes, I think in some cases it is. Like a lot of creditor-debtor relationships, particularly at this level. You know, I think what they want to see is a use of the line and the repayment of the. And with that use and repayment of the line, that's where you can develop, for a lack of better word, trust with your banking partner that if you're going to draw on that line, that you're going to pay it back in a timely manner based on the agreements and that documentation. And it's in my experience that that dynamic run is created, maybe not on day one. It depends on your operating history. You guys have a good runway there. And so those are the types of things I would look at. And in my role, I can have those conversations directly and have on behalf of my clients to help create the narrative that the bank would understand and appreciate.
How much, how much?
This is Paul Benidetti.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got Paul Benidetti asking a question. How much debt has the DDA been authorized to?
Overall, I think our debt limit was around three and a half million for the life of the DDA.
Okay, I have this document here that says, it was a ballot question apparently. I don't know what happened to it, but it says, shall the town of Nettleland debt be increased 2.924 million with the repayment cost of 51110510?
I would say that's possibly an error with the Downtown Development Authority, not the town of Nettleland.
Well, no, well, no, that's the way it reads because of the way the statute works law. I mean, this is your debt. I mean, it's not the city's debt, but the DDA statute is one of a kind in that it says the DDA is an independent entity, but you're subject to Tabor. And you have, you work by statute. The statute requires you to work closely with the town. And the town issues the debt on your behalf. That's why I'm saying, I just, I want to be sure we don't, we know how much money we're working with as far as authorized debt because we have to.
Right. So what Paul is talking about is a good point, right? So anytime the DDA borrows, you're going to be subject to that Tabor limitation that was voter approved. Now, in some circumstances, I'm not suggesting this is the case for a line of credit, but for example, a reimbursement agreement in which you agree to reimburse a particular developer over a series of years and payments, that would be considered a multi-fiscal year obligation under Tabor, and it would have to fall underneath your debt limit. Now, in some cases, a debt instrument can be issued that is subject to annual appropriation, okay? And that is a concept born out of Tabor as well. And that is how a lot of lease purchases for essential service buildings, that's the concept those use. So what will happen is instead of having, you know, a note for 20 years, that's a 20-year obligation. What that subject to annual appreciation does under the law is it's 21-year obligations. So the DDA actually has to make an appropriation during its budget cycle to appropriate money for payment of that obligation. And then you're not subject to the debt limit that Paul talked about. If we have an earlier draft and that's not the final amount, Ron, we'll want to do that due diligence.
How much debt, this is Paul Benidetti again, how much debt has been used? Does the DDA have any debt now?
We have some, a little bit, to the town. And my suggestion has been, and I'm counseling with you for this, is to take all of our debt out of borrowing from the town and stand as you said, an independent entity so that we can create more credit that helps both the town and us. Because when we borrow from the town, and that's where our borrowing stands right now, we borrow from the town's waterfront. I don't know, and if Kate's on, if she's got the figures, but it's not a whole lot compared to our cash position. Okay, we have a half a million in CD right now. We have about $300,000 in our operating funds, which comes from the mill levy. And I think we have about $800,000, is it?
It's like 400 in the operating fund, 432, 561 in our TIF funds, and then 500 in the CD, so in the ballpark of 1.5 million in cash.
Okay.
So that's the other piece of those conversations.
Right.
And I have a question in on all injects here. We bought our CDs, trying to be sure that we were insured by the FDIC, so we put $250,000 in one initially. That took two months. Then the debate on the, and this is where you're here, addition of another $250,000 took our bird eight months to get there. So now we are locked into a CD at a much lower rate. My question after giving that explanation is, would it be wise to just cancel that CD and go get another one with another institution? What are we getting now, four, 4.5?
Or higher in some instances, yes.
So if, I'm not sure, and that's why I'm asking you.
Sure.
We are getting, I think, 1.5%.
Right. So for me, I'm going to always be open, transparent, and upfront. I don't know the answer to that question, but what I will tell you is it's a mathematical one, okay? So for me, I would want to look at the cancellation fee or termination fee.
There isn't any.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a great answer. And if there isn't, and there's no small print that I'm not privy to, certainly, you know, for me, that would be an opportunity to consider for the board, certainly. When you can earn 300 more basis points or three percentage points more than what you're earning currently, for me, it's a prudent decision to consider those opportunities because ultimately, you know, what you're meant to do as an organization is affect projects. And it's my personal opinion that it's your fiduciary duty to your voters as well as your taxpayer dollars that you collect to consider those types of opportunities. If you can make your money work at 4.5%, it makes a lot more sense than at 1.5%. And I'm going to stop there and just go back to the line of credit real quick because there was one last comment I wanted to add to that. Line of credits typically have to be paid back within a calendar or fiscal year. So ultimately, the way those are repaid should not impact your debt limit. Now, if the balance is carried over a year, then it would become a multi-fiscal year obligation and it would count against your debt limit. So that was just a quick and informative note that I want to add. But as far as CDs, returning to that conversation, my firm has institutional sales professionals that help our clients find attractive CDs. And what I've counseled my DDA clients when it comes to these types of opportunities is, you know, if this is money you don't need soon or in the interim, you're getting 100% of your principal back plus that 4.5% interest. The one thing I do counsel my clients on is you get, you know, multiple bids to make sure that you're getting the best deal at the best fees with the most flexibility. And for me, those decisions or opportunities should absolutely be explored. It's part of your fiduciary duty.
So this, I'd like to return to the question of repayment and building that line of credit over a period of time.
Yeah.
Would it make sense for us to pay current bills out of the line of credit and pay back those monthly? And one of the reasons we've done this is also the statute, which in our case seems a little bit mute, but nevertheless, you have to comply that when you borrow a project, you approve it within the DDA board. Then the town board approves the project, and then we borrow the money, which we normally just pay back because of our cash position. We can't, we don't need, at this point, if we have a major project, need to, we can pay it back right out of current funds. So we can borrow one day, pay it.
Sure.
Does this help build our line of credit or does this just kind of futile exercise?
Well, I think it certainly builds goodwill, trust, and yes, some credit with the banking institution. Because ultimately, what they care about is the ability to be repaid and to be repaid when they're told they're going to be repaid. Now, what I will, and this is where my good friend Paul might kick me in the shins, but for me, if you're doing it for operating type of expenses, maybe small programming expenses, to me, that's more an operational kind of function and not necessarily a debt function. But if you were to use the line of credit for an actual project, something that's capital in nature, capital expenditure of some kind, that to me crosses the line that would require town approval, if that makes sense, Ron.
Oh yeah, I know the town approval would be that, but in terms of separately, we definitely need the town approval for projects.
Right.
And we do that.
Right. It's my opinion, you won't need it if you're doing it for operation, but that's when the attorneys get involved and start making determinations because the letter of the law might say, hey, you're drawing on a piece of, you're creating a debt instrument for a day or not, you're creating a debt instrument. And so does that automatically trigger the town's approval? Well, then it starts becoming just administrative.
In terms of, I understand that.
Okay.
My concern is, again, the attitude of the bank, building this level of trust to where we can fund a major project in excess of our assets. Our assets consist of cash. We have no buildings, we've invested nothing. And the largest project that we have taken on was a parking district right outside this building. And that was about $400,000, which we paid out of cash. Even though we borrowed it from the waterfront, we paid it back in increments as the bills came.
Sure.
But there are projects on the horizon that are, might need this kind of thing. And even though my suggestion is that we pay current operating bills with it, the bank themselves sees, correct me if I'm wrong, activity on the account where they get a little remuneration. So another question that came up, is it worth the toss of a line of credit that we pay to the bank to establish the reputation of paying back to where we can borrow in excess of our actual assets?
I think ultimately, it'll depend on what those fees are and what juice or interest you're going to be paying on the amounts drawn. For me, again, it does come to the point where you want to shop and make sure you're getting the best deal. But typically, if you've got funds in a bank, that's a good first start. I can sense my colleague Paul wants to chime in, so Paul, please.
Well, it depends on what you're trying to do, Ron. How much tax increment money roughly does the authority bring in every year?
About $400,000.
Okay, so that, you can always get some money based on that revenue stream without doing anything about these other assets you have. So my point is, it depends on what you want to do with your money. You're talking about big projects, you're talking about projects that are redevelopment, where somebody's going to, has a gap, wants to get financed, and their project's going to produce new property tax for the DDA.
May I give you an example?
Yeah.
This has not been brought before the board, but it's a discussion among the merchants. There's a big trash collection problem in the downtown area. There's just not enough space. This has been going on for years. Different merchants share, different dumpsters. The public comes in and fills up the dumpsters and blows around. And so their concept or the idea of forming a sanitation district that is permanent, as opposed to the DDA which dies in 30 years. Could the DDA conceivably fund the creation of the sanitation district by the equipment needed to get it running? And then either loan or grant to the district, the sanitation district, funds to achieve that product? This is a rather unique thing. This has not been discussed by the board of the DDA. It's only been discussed through a few merchants, and they came to me asking what the ramifications would be in terms of how the DDA could help. And so that's why I'm using.
Well, would it be exclusively for the DDA area?
It would be in the DDA area, yes.
And would the district then repay the DDA out of its?
Either partially or fully. The, one of the things I have advocated in terms of becoming a chairman is that we're not using the tools in our toolbox. And one of the things I think is a tool, we have the ability to loan money within the district to help create projects.
Yes, you're right. You're right. You can do that.
We could grant to them, but I would like to see the DDA become more like this fellow, a bank of our own.
Well, most DDAs are anyway. When they do, when you help develop or fund a project, for instance, get something going, that's a bondholder, you are agreeing to pay him back for something that he's going to create for the benefit of the DDA itself. You are, you are in that, you do that. That's the way you're supposed to operate.
Okay, so I could go back to you, the merchants. We're going to have a meeting very soon and say, yes, this is within the purview of the DDA. We will, we can help you, of course, and take a vote of the board and then a vote of the board trustees to approve it too. And then they're going to have to come to the DA board with an extremely detailed plan of whether they want a trash crusher here and a firework crusher there, what the delivery times would be, and the projected costs in terms of operational things. And then, so we would be able to say yes or no to their proposal as either a loan or a grant.
I don't know of anything, you know, there's nothing in the statute or anything that says you couldn't do that. You know, we have to get the approvals, as you say, and.
No, this would be a well-vented, the right way.
Excellent. Okay, then that's, that would be up to the board, I would think, whether they want to. Something like that, and the town board.
Our DDA to this point has achieved ironically a high cash position, probably better than most of your DDAs.
Cool.
Yeah. Is it better than? Is it better than?
Better than my two DAs, but they're, they're only two, two years in. So I would hope that my clients get to a cash position like yours.
Well, our cash position is that good because we have not taken on any major projects. And I want to see those, and I make no bones about my position, I want to see those projects be revenue producing to the DDA to fund other projects.
Correct.
So far, we've taken on projects like, and I'm not against this, I voted for a beautification plan where we plant flowers over the town. But I don't see this as quite in line with the philosophy of what the statute was set up for. To create projects that are enduring and exceed the life of the DDA. And none of these projects actually do at this point, so.
So to address that very specifically, Ron, is I tell my clients now, they don't have a mill levy again, so I'm telling them at least, at least fifty percent of their funds over their lifecycle, at least if principally more sixty to seventy percent of their TIF revenue brought in should go to a project. Okay? Because that's what you guys do, is a project and program. Now, beautification's great, place making's great, community building is great. And that's where I tell my clients, you can spend some of your programming money. Whereas, you know, those bigger dollar amounts, those should go towards projects that then in turn produce more revenue, that then in turn allow you to do more projects.
Well, the bigger projects need, need more intense management. So we have a conundrum. We, our mill levy brings us about thirty thousand a year. We need an executive director to coordinate it and we have a good. So I am concerned of the concept that we can't take TIP funds and pay for administrative costs.
Who says that?
No, see, this is where.
Will you shout? Well, you know, you, listen. I know that's a, that's a misconception, but just listen to what Troy said. There are many, not many, but there, there aren't that many DDAs in the state. Not all of them have the five percent mill, five mill levy that, that says that's for administration supposedly in the statute, but you're not limited to that. These, they have to use TIP in, in, in those places where they don't have a mill levy. They have to use tax increment funds. And at a place where they do have a mill levy, you're not limited to the use of the mill levy, just the mill levy for admin costs. Because that may not be produced enough, especially in yours where, you know, you're not letting it on every property. So I don't know, I mean, I, I have run into this several times. And I've run into it here and I have always advised, no, there's no limit. As a matter of fact, most urban renewal authorities and DDAs take some of the TIF money each year right out of, than they should. Whatever portion they need to fund their operations because the problem that most of the DDAs and urban renewal authorities have is the same one you have here. And that you're a small community and you don't have the ability that, you know, to hire the kind of people you need to administer something like this. Administering TIP is pretty complicated. I mean, you have to work with the assessor. You have to make sure the, the property's being properly assessed and that it's being collected. That the, the treasurer's sending the right amount of money. The assessor's putting the right amount of assessed value in the TIF portion of the assessment roll.
Yep.
That's a big problem around the state. A lot of times by either design or just incompetence or not, or, or not having knowledge. I'm not saying, well, incompetence is too harsh a word. Sometimes, I mean, assessors have a tough job and it's complicated for them too. And they, and they don't all operate on things instead of rules. Sometimes they make it up themselves. In fact, I, I know of one county where the assessor does not know a thing about TIF. And so the question came, how is he doing this? Well, he would just sit down every year and say, okay, I think I'm going to put X amount in the assessment roll for TIF. And he, he just, he, he didn't even try to use the formulas in the handbook because frankly, he, he didn't have the expertise of a small rural county anyway. That, yes, you can, a long answer to a short question, you can use the TIF funds and you should. As you need to supplement, I don't, you know, you don't have to use the five mil for administration. I think you probably should because it does mention it in there. And then supplement, supplement that as you need it from there.
See, and one of the reasons for asking you to come was that we have some board members who are skeptical of the value of a line of credit. And I'm anxious to have so much information that I get from you as to the validity of doing this.
Well, I'm one that's somewhat skeptical myself because I don't know. Why would you need, particularly need a line of credit when you have? I, I mean, it depends on the kind of project you're going.
That's what I was saying.
If you, because you can go to a banker, especially somebody like the institutions that Troy represents and get a, you know, a loan, a bond. That's, you can issue a bond for certain project. You have to describe this, it's like a line of credit, except you get all the money upfront. And, and then you administer the costs out of, out of a bond fund. Now, maybe a line of credit might be a little cheaper because you don't have cost of issuance. But sometimes to get a line of credit, it depends on the interest rate, it's going to depend on whether it's tax exempt and you need to hire a bond attorney to write that opinion usually.
Uh, two things about that, which I would respond. This community, I think, is pretty bond adverse. They haven't issued one for, my knowledge, and I could be wrong, about twenty years and they have done it for their sewer system. But that's the reason for my question, and asking about revenue producing projects, for example. Since you, your skepticism is justified and it's the same as those board members. So perhaps we.
No, no, I, don't get me wrong. Any, any type of farm that the DDA does, whether it's a line of credit or whether you're reimbursing the development and you expect to, and you're going to get paid back, either, no, whether you, you, you are, you are. If a person that you contract with, let's just say a developer, want to say, I'm, I need, I want to build this facility. I'm short of cash and I need money for sewers, water, sewer, something like that. Some, there's some gap. I need two hundred thousand dollars. So you write a contract with that developer and you say, when you build this, when you get your certificate of occupancy for the tax paying improvements, we'll start paying it back. Or you can go to his bank and he can pledge your obligation to repay him that two hundred thousand and get, pay the money upfront as he, as Troy was suggesting. And then you just, you just pay him back. And now you're, now he's a bondholder. That, I mean.
Okay, that makes sense.
It, it, the way the statute is written, these are all revenue bonds. This doesn't pledge, it's not a general pledge of anything. Now, you have this cash on hand and I don't, I don't know. I would like to, if you're going to pledge all this cash as a security. I, you know, I'm not sure, I don't know, I'd do it on a contingent basis. If it were me, I'd say, oh, we'll pay you out of the four hundred thousand that we get every year out of the TIF funds and we'll only use this for reserves if we need it. And then I don't know what you're going to use this money for, but maybe there's some.
Let me give you. Cat example, okay. Also, it's not brought before the board, but maybe we have a tremendous parking problem. If the district and the merchants in the district wanted to create a parking district or a parking system where they had to put out money for signs and software, hardware. And nowadays, the hardware is going away from parking lots. The gates and the kiosks and things because it's all done by phone. So the project at hand would be a revenue producing project, but it would take a while to get it into position. The consultants and the software and that sort of stuff. And probably consultants to say for this town, I, this is a total guess, so don't share it, don't take, maybe a hundred thousand dollars. So if the dis-surface park served parking, not, not a building. I understand Longmont DDA actually did a parking building. I worked on it. So it worked out and a very successful. We could probably do that too, but I think it would be in excess of our ability with what we have. So we put up some hundred thousand in cash, let's just say we just go to a building that's going to cost four million dollars. We could pledge the revenue from the building and probably some of the TIF money and get it accomplished. These are concepts that I want to see you would endorse it. Or I'm not sure how Longmont did it, but there are board members here that are very interested in working with the town to solve the parking problem. And there's some very excellent consultants out there who've done wonders in major cities. Guy by the name of Donald Shoup, I don't know if you've read his book or not.
But I know of it.
Nevertheless, I'm looking for explanations of the ways to achieve these things that come from people who've done this. I've never done it, so I'm not an expert. You two guys are, so that's why you're here. Want to know how, and that's my example of how we would use a line of credit. Because in terms of the town as a whole, funding any project for the DDA, I don't, is, I don't think is politically viable in this little community.
Okay, well. That's always the major consideration. There are lots of things you can do, but they don't happen because the community doesn't support it. And that's, you know, that's true all over the state. I work all over the state and there are many communities that you know, have their own culture and you have to, you have to respect it. But, but, but let me, let me just, do you, are you putting some of these activities or studies or something in your budget as you're, as, I mean, to see if they're feasible and how it can be done economically?
We're just going into our budget studies. We have, I think we're works such as scheduled. I'm not, and we're going to start doing that, so this is very opportune in terms of this discussion. Uh, the answer is they're not there yet, but I think they will be for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget seasons.
So, so I, I'm going to go back to the distinction that Paul made just a few minutes ago about kind of the nature of the project, right? So for, you guys can do all the planning and studying you want on your statute. Certainly my Englandwood client has spent a lot of their money in their first two years on planning and studies. So I think that might be an opportunity to use a line of credit. But when, or you could also use a line of credit to help advance a public benefit related to a project if it's almost immediate. If you could be that last piece of funding to make it happen. But when it comes to like a vertical project of any kind that would be revenue producing for the DDA, you know, you're going to engage the developer in year one. You're not going to have that property producing revenue, let's just call it, for at least three years until it gets built and then on the tax rolls.
Five.
Okay, three to five. So that's the perfect answers between an attorney and the banker. I'm going to say three, he's going to say five. So with that, to me, I don't want you guys using a line of credit to help advance a project like that. To me, that's more of a reimbursement because you want to hold the developer accountable for producing the income producing property.
See, in our case, we've never dealt with a developer at all and I don't think there's an intent to do that. This would be a new concept that would be rolled out before our board.
So you're saying here, you're not going to. You know, it's in the statute. I, I'm just saying, there's a provision in the statute that says you're supposed to engage the private sector to the extent feasible, maximum extent feasible. I, so I, I'm saying that doesn't mean that, that, you know, it's an absolute requirement. But you're saying in Netherlands, you think and you, the way the, the support you can garner is going to be for using the TIF funds, generalized TIF funds that you get to do things like, or things that have more of a public purpose and use rather than depending on private enterprise to produce the TIF revenue.
Oh, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that's what's been done heretofore. And what you're advocating, I very much.
Well, I'm not, I'm not advocating. I, you, you, you are, you.
I am, okay.
Well, maybe you are, but I, what I, I, my job here as your attorney is just to tell you, you know, how it works. And, and, and the, the reason I think there, there are more urban renewal authorities by far. There are like sixty-four communities in the state that have urban renewal authorities. I, I'm surprised to hear there's many of twenty because.
Middleton just created one.
Yep. So because they, they have a little more freedom and ironically, even though they're, they're much more independent, they do, they work almost exclusively with the private sector. You know, they do have these. Now, the other thing you can do here is, but you know, you were talking about a, a special district of some sort. Or you can have a parking. You can have. Yeah, sanitation district, metro districts, you know.
Business improvement district.
Yes, business improvement district. Well, but you have the DDA. I don't know if you need a business, but you can. You can have a business improvement.
Well, I guess we're looking, or at least. Yeah, we're looking forward a long way. And we're looking at the fact that the DDA dies, in our case, another twelve years. So what can we do to perpetuate and sustain a better environment for our businesses? And, and keep the town's revenues going up. So the infrastructure gets repaired, built, fixed, and we have a better business climate.
Well, you can also, you can extend.
Oh, I was going to steal that.
Or two ten-year periods. You can go up to fifty years with, for TIF or DDA, but it's a little tricky. You would, you, the, it would have to, there would have to be, your base would go up to the current. You'd start at zero.
You start.
And then, and then you have to do it again for another ten. It's two ten-year extensions. But, but your, you know, your TIF is, is, is not so great after that. So you're, you know, I, I, I'm not sure. I, I, I know, I think for Collins, certainly, that's extended there.
So it's grand jobs.
And grand jobs. Interesting.
We had a consultant that when the DDA was formed, got everybody together and the business committee raised twenty-five thousand dollars to get the DDA started. And there was discussion of whether or not to do a URA, Urban Renewal Authority. And it was soundly rejected. In retrospect, my opinion was it would have been a much better thing to have done.
A lot more controversial politically.
It was political and that's why we didn't do it. There was extreme resistance.
I understand. Well, we're not, we probably should stick to, to talking about, you know, what problems you want here rather than philosophize.
So you've got thirteen years left, right?
Twelve or thirteen.
Twelve or thirteen years.
Two thousand and five.
And so someone like me can project what the growth and, and that valuation over the next thirteen years would be. And then, you know, we can kind of get a roadmap for how much money you have to play with over your remaining years. And when someone borrows, either the DDA via the town or the developer uses the revenue stream promised to them to borrow from their bank, you know, thirteen years isn't a. To borrow from their bank, you know, thirteen years isn't a a long time to get a meaningful amount out of a bond issue. Now, um, I do think, you know, without really directly engaging. Uh, developers, you know, you're gonna be looking, as Paul stated, at projects that. Uh, provide a a public and community benefit that then just enhances your community and. And perhaps attracts some kind of development over the long term, because ultimately, you know, without some kind of catalytic development. You're not gonna get that huge jump in valuation that would then result in a huge jump in tax increment revenues. Um, you know, for me, if the town, uh, has a. Capital improvement plan that they've worked on and updated recently, that might be an opportunity to explore, to team up on. Much-needed infrastructure projects that just make your community a better one to live in and visit. Um, because thirteen years, when you do all kind of the financing math, you're just.
I get twenty-three years.
With the extensions.
No. It's thirty years, right?
Yeah, but we've gone fifteen, two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five, okay, it's thirty years, if two thousand and five is your base year, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you add thirty years, that takes you to twenty forty-five.
Twenty thirty-five.
Twenty thirty-five, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
See, that's why I.
That's why I'm the banker, he's the attorney.
Well, if I was, if I, 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 I have a much more lucrative life. So you are right, it is, it is.
So, the the point being is, from a fixed revenue stream, whether it's projected or historical. If you have twenty years, you can raise more money through a borrowing than with one with thirteen, okay?
Correct.
And so you're, you're, you've got a limited runway, and so then, for me. The line of credit starts becoming more of a thought again, uh, depending on the type of projects you would want to affect. Um, and so for me, you know, thirteen years is still plenty of room. To do a reimbursement agreement with the developer, if that is a direction the board de- decides to go in. And Paul's right, it is under the statute, and I actually implore my D D A clients to engage the developer community. But that might be very specific to their community needs, for example, in Englewood, they have a huge attainable. Or workforce housing initiative, okay? So that, by having that initiative as as an organization, as a D D A. That actually incentivizes them to find a developer that wants to develop those types of projects. So I'm not suggesting you have to go out and start marketing yourself to developers, but if there are strategic. And catalytic, um, developments that you want to see in your community. You'll have enough runway to do a reimbursement agreement for that type of arrangement.
But if you're, if you're saying, you know, that's maybe not so likely, you're better off. Well, then you're better off doing, you know, something along the lines you're talking about to benefit the downtown. While you still have the tax increment funds, because. You're, you you're just going to be collecting them, uh, and then turning around and paying them back to the taxing entities. Uh, you know, unless you're gonna use them to carry out your plan of development, so, I mean, it it all depends on why you're doing. Why you have a downtown development authority, I mean, it's a philosophical discussion, and how you're going to, uh, utilize the next. Remaining life on your, on your, on your TIF revenue, and what are you gonna do with the TIF revenue you already have collected?
That's what we're planning, we're looking for advice on how to spend the money.
Okay, so I was just gonna go there, for me, the D D A outside of the town needs to create a, a. Kind of a capital improvement type of plan, it's an Excel worksheet that basically shows. Projects that need to to be, uh, implemented, and then sources of funds. My two clients are looking for the sources of funds right now, you guys have a good source of funds. So for me, I think outlining projects that the board prioritizes. And let's see how far we can make the money you have and are collecting go as far as possible based on some of those projects.
Town has to, you have to engage it.
Of course, of course, of course, because the town's gonna have a a pulse on its infrastructure and other types of needs. And that's why I I mentioned, um, just a moment ago, if there is a town-based capital improvement plan that's been recently updated. There could be some projects that could be really good partnership opportunities with the town. The sanitation district could be a partnership, uh, the parking, sounds like it would stay in-house, so. Um, the revenues from that parking, managed parking would come to the D D As, that kind of, I know nothing's been decided, but as we're kind of draining here.
Well, we're hoping if we fund it, that we at least share in the revenue with the town, because it would definitely be a town D D A partnership project.
Yes.
And possibly a three-way partnership with a developer who wants to see consistency of parking manager.
Sure, um, and that was my point earlier that maybe I didn't make as clear, these improvements. Make your community more attractive to a developer for whatever reason, you know, maybe a developer wants to build. A new retail restaurant business, maybe a developer wants to build some townhomes, uh, for the workforce. Those kinds of things, for me, the biggest opportunity you guys have with thirteen years remaining. Is partnerships and, um, making your dollars go far on projects. That have already been identified and may already have a source or two related to, that's how you guys are gonna make the biggest impact in the, in your remaining thirteen years, in my opinion.
That was Troy Bernberg and Paul Vannadetti, our attorney. Uh, we appreciate their coming, they've given their all to us to try and help us move forward. Uh, so that we have, uh, a vision that is achievable and workable and fundable. I thank you both for coming, I really appreciate it, any final comments you'd like to wrap up? Work with the town.
Okay.
Um, I would be happy, uh, to help you guys with any of this detailed planning going forward. I do think, um, the timing for bringing in some of these perspectives is really well-timed, because. And it's appropriate, because you have thirteen years left, and I think ultimately outlining that roadmap now. Uh, i- is a really important initiative for your organization, and I would be happy to help you guys along the way. And I'll also agree with Paul, work with the town, find out what projects you can both, uh, make a big impact on. Um, and and let's, let's make sure that this D D A is as accessible as it can be, and it has been, uh, for the last thirteen years. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Troy and Paul, uh, I'm calling the meeting to a close at, uh, fifty-eight minutes. And, uh, we will publish this and give credit copies to those board members who were not available to be here, thank you very much, Dylan.